To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Passings, Chambers, Dahl, Dunn, Lindsey, Stefas, Sullivan.
Okay, we recognize first. So I wanted to recognize A.J. A.J. is part of the Belmont Special Olympics program. We have three area schools that are a part of the Belmont program and it's our bowling season, so A.J. bowled as a doubles team partner with one of the young men from Belmont this year, and they got third at regionals, which advanced them to the state competition, which was held two weekends ago, and they came home with a gold medal, which he has displayed, so he got first in his doubles division with his partner. So, and then we have one more tournament in December, first week in December, we participate in what's called a unified tournament, so each of our athletes is paired with a peer or family member who is not in Special Olympics, so it's usually a friend or a family member that they bowl with, and then that's the one that they love the most, that's their favorite competition, so. You want to show everybody your medal? Take their hands.
Okay, we've got WASB business honor rolls. Our first one, we're going to do two of them, military-rich veterinarian service, provide discount service to the Mineral Point Elementary Schools' first-time-ever therapy dog, Cooper. The district is excited to have Cooper on staff and provides emotional support for our students. Also, Sleepy Valley Kennels, they generously donated the wonderful therapy dog, Cooper, for the district, and this is planning to help staff provide emotional support for all students. So, we have some information. And our other recipient is Shake Rig Alley. Shake Rig Alley in Mineral Point is a true center of arts. Shake Rig Alley generously allows the use of the outdoor amphitheater for the Mineral Point Elementary Schools' fifth-grade graduation ceremony each spring. Shake Rig Alley also partners with the Council of Wisconsin Writers, Wisconsin People and Ideas, and Wisconsin poet laureate commission through the Wisconsin Academy of Science, Arts, and Letters to offer week-long residence to their annual writing contest winners. These authors then visit Mineral Point Schools to speak to students about the writing process and their publication. Additionally, Mineral Point is the home of many talented professional artists, and Shake Rig Alley has hosted free workshops for elementary students. Thank you, guys. Okay, anybody on the board receive any communications they want to bring forward?
Yes, Jeff, a number of people have commented on the gymnasium not having a clear pathway to go up and down. For example, a lot of other gyms will have designated steps, and ours do not. I'm wondering, just in my own mind, if we could have a painted area along the rail where people are not encouraged to sit, so to speak, and have it be a way for folks, as we get older, going up and down.
Your wish will be granted. It's one of the things we're working on before the winter sports season comes in. We're actually going to be using some yellow tape along the rails on both sides of the gym, on both sides of the bleachers, to try to designate that as an area that allows for more ease and convenience getting up and down.
I would like to see it go one step further, Mitch, and put steps in our bleachers with handrails. I mean, you have to travel to many schools not to find steps. Doc and I, we were up at Wisconsin Heights, and you can see they had dated bleachers, and then recently they put steps in, and it was very nice, and there were so many comments, these elderly people, giving the right checks to the school, all their lives supporting the school. I think a good way to pay them back, to bring our gym up to code. You can't build, you can't put bleachers in nowadays without steps. It is dangerous walking up and down in bleachers.
Then another thing I noticed at some of the events, that they have little waste baskets periodically here and there, I might talk to the custodial staff, if they're there, I don't think they'll disappear, but it might be something to consider. Granted, if it's a tournament game, you're expecting a packed house, it's different.
Yeah, I understand. And I know with steps, I've always been given the reason that they will cut down on our capacity, but we're only a lawsuit away from having put steps in at some point.
I could certainly have run your check into what the cost would be, what we would lose in seating, and kind of get back to the board with some information.
That night, I had half a dozen people up there telling me what a great idea that was, and how nice that was to be able to actually go to the top and sit.
I wish we had some portable stands at the office at either the court, you know, where we had that other gym. I wish there was, I mean, that's just my personal inhibition to attend to.
And I got another issue that I've been contacted by, by a few people directly. The football game Friday night, we had to cart up, I drove up personally, three hours and 45 minutes to attend that football game. I know, I know the team we played, they were, they had a perfect record, as we did, and I think, I think it was completely, completely ridiculous that that, that they made Mineral Point drive all the way up there, that we could not have found a neutral site to play that game. And the biggest question is, who makes these decisions, and who's looking out for Mineral Point in decisions like this? I would like to see a response from, from the executive director of the WIAA telling us what the process is and why they made Mineral Point drive three hours and 45 minutes.
It's my understanding, there's only five, five games totally in the playoffs for football, correct?
At that round?
Well, this was our, this was our third one, and there was, there's two more games had we won, right?
I understand that.
Well, what I'm getting at though, Larry, is that it was like, I was originally told by somebody that the number-one seeds get two home games, well, so when we got to this third one, I was like, yes, they're going to finally get a new trophy. And I was told, oh, no, that's not true. It's three. I have never liked WIA. I think they suck. They're supposed to work for us, so they tell us everything, and they listen to nobody.
Jeff, you've got to remember, that's taxpayer dollars they're using.
You're preaching to the buyer. I think we need a formal settlement.
Who is, who's making the decisions? I mean, who are they accountable to?
I agree.
Then they, then you see them on TV, and they're wondering why their participation rate is going down with two athletes. Well, maybe they had a look in the mirror.
They have no competition, so they can do what they want.
Well, I know. It's ridiculous. Unbelievable.
The last two years, the dues that school districts paid to belong to the WIA have been zero, so basically, all their funding is coming off of the tournament series. So if we host the first two-round playoff games that we hosted here, ticket money, those things get sent to the WIAA. It's, it's similar to basketball, although travel in basketball wouldn't necessarily be as bad, but in, the number-one seed, the higher seeded team in basketball, would host through at least the regionals, through the, so you could potentially play at home on Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday that first week, and then they start moving it to neutral when you get up to the next level. So, as we spoke on the phone, how the coaches at the seating meeting voted, there were, as you said, two teams that were undefeated, had the coaches voted the other direction, we would have been hosting last weekend instead of having to go to Mondovi. That, that decision is made through the WIA as to who gets to host and for how long, or how many rounds. To find a, to find a neutral site, teams have to be willing to host that neutral site. We've hosted volleyball sectional semifinal games because we're willing to host, or sometimes we have been asked to host those games by communities that are like, hey, I see you're willing to host, and we're supposed to go way over here, but you're in the middle, would you be willing to do that for us? The same is true sometimes in some of the sectional semis for basketball as well. We put in that we're willing to host those games, sometimes we get a game, sometimes we don't. This year, for wrestling, we always say, well, we're willing to host wrestling sectional. This year, we didn't get the sectional, but we're hosting the wrestling regional. And again, a lot of the money that we take in at the door does not stay in the district. We collect that money, and we report out to the WIA. We sold, you know, 500 tickets at $5 apiece, here's how much, you know, they have their own formulas, you know, we send that out. This next round is guaranteed to be in a neutral site because they want this Level Four played on turf. So schools that have turf, that are willing to host, especially if they're not in the tournament series, they have to find places that are, that are open. We were looking at, if, had we won Friday night, we were looking at either going to Bigfoot, Waukesha North, or...
Those are the two, Bigfoot or Waukesha.
Okay, and that would have been a neutral site, depending on if it was same area.
I think that's a good idea, if, you know, if, if the teams are traveling somewhat equal distances, and, but with, with the record of both teams, I don't know, I, I just don't think. Either, either they have something against Mineral Point, it's not the first time the WIA is really, it was a short shot.
It was the coaches. The coaches voted on the seeds, and it was a, it was a...
And I heard about our friends right to the southwest, a coach voting against us, like, whatever, but shouldn't it be up to somebody else to decide that?
Well, and I don't think it would have been right for them to have to come to us three and a half hours.
Oh, I agree. I agree, and I'm not saying that.
Just the common sense to me is, and that's the problem, the WIA has never had any common sense.
I remember quite a few years ago, for a regional final basketball game between Mineral Point and Fenway, it was a Saturday, snowing, it was not a nice day, and they had gotten to Middleton. Can you tell me the common sense in that?
Most of those were all over there.
So we'll look into that.
And I want to personally thank the UW-Platteville for allowing that game to be down there a couple of weeks ago. And them colleges, I think, they just, they just really look for opportunities to get their high schools in the area to use their facilities. What a great selling point.
It is, they were, they were more than gracious. There is a cost to use that facility, so it, it costs us money to go down there because we were the host school. But, but you're right, it was a, it was a great place to play, you know, it worked out well for us with a win, but you talk about a fantastic football game in a great location.
Either way.
Yeah.
Either way.
Exactly.
But could we, could we reach out to the, to that WIA organization and get a response back?
I can certainly try.
Is there a director, or how does that operation work?
Dave Anderson is the executive director. So he is the top guy at the, at the WIAA.
And does he make all the decisions, or?
There is a board, a board of control. There is a board of control made up of, you have to be an employee, a current employee of a school district, and in an administrative capacity, so anybody that's a principal or superintendent has to be elected to represent school sizes and regions.
Okay. Is it true, is it true next year that they will be deciding who goes where in tournament play, Mitch? Did I, did somebody tell me that?
For football?
Yeah.
They're going to be, years ago, there was what was called a district plan, because football, teams were dropping out, co-op-ing, the number of teams available to compete against, the travel time, so they started looking at district football. So you might, if, say, we're the SWAL conference, you might not be playing some of the same teams that you would have normally played for football only. That was voted down by the Football Coaches Association, I believe, so then they put that on, on the shelf. Several years passed, some more teams, you know, you look at Belmont, dropped to eight-man football, Benton, Scales, Mound, and now Schlesberger are all one team for football. You know, teams are going to co-ops and tri-ops and things, so all of a sudden, an eight-team league is now down to seven, is now down to six. So you play five conference games, and then you have to find four non-conference games somewhere. So that's why Aquinas and Onalaska Luther were part of ours, and Lancaster was part of our conference this year. This came out of some work, a lot of work, from this area, from, a lot from the SWAL conference, to try to balance out some conference, some conferences for football only, so that you weren't trying to find a great deal of non-conference games, and you weren't having to travel all over the state. The WIA put a moratorium on any football-only conferences for this year, and now the Coaches Association kind of brought back something similar to that district plan. So next year, our conference, and I, I don't know the name, the schools off the top of my head, do you, Matt?
Oh, it'll be, Austin Darlington, does not come now.
No.
Belleville.
Yeah, that's right.
Park, Orfordville, Parkview?
I think that's...
I think that's the other team that comes over. Aquinas and Luther are out, Belleville and...
Orfordville, Parkview are not in our conference.
I've got friends up in La Crosse, and they said they couldn't figure out what happened there either, that they, shoot, that, that Aquinas, they were down here, I think they were down between Darlington and Lancaster and Mineral Point.
Between the two teams up there in La Crosse, I guess, it was unfair that they had to travel this far down here.
And, and the schools in, this, that was not assigned by the WIA. Our conference this year was not determined by the WIA, only to give their stamp of approval. We reached out to all sorts of schools around the area, big and small, to try to alleviate the small conference numbers, the travel time, so that the district administrators, the football coaches needed to sign off to, for us to have this conference, this current, the current conference that we finished. So Aquinas and Onalaska Luther agreed to be a part of the conference for this year, knowing that in another year, it was going to change, but it was, we went on enrollment numbers and success factors and, you know, because you...
I understand.
Bascabel and Southern. Bascabel's the biggest school in SWAL, and they played in the Six Rivers Conference, and Southwestern is the smallest school in the SWAL, and they played in the Six Rivers, but was football only. And a lot of it is around, how many kids can we get to play football, the fact that you, you know, you have to have 11 on the field, and you need, you know, nobody wants to send a 100-pound freshman out there because he's the third-string tackle going up against, you know, a year ago, somebody like Eric Heiser, you know, it's like, nobody wanted to do that, and then people's programs start to fall apart. So that's why this year is the way it was, and now, you know, this changed, they're still trying to match up schools based on enrollment.
Well, there should be an avenue, as it was this year. If you have a disgruntled coach from a neighboring school having the important vote to change everything, there should be an appeal process that, hey, Mitch Wainwright can go to the WIA and say, hey, let's, let's take a look at this.
I'm not sure that they're working on that.
Well, there should be.
You have, you have the ability to appeal the vote at that coaches' meeting, and I, and I can speak from personal experience in basketball, you go to your seating meeting, you sit down, and you have an opportunity to say, I believe that I am the one seed or two seed, and, and you look at, what's easier in basketball is a lot of the teams you have head-to-head competition with, you know, and you've played a lot of the teams twice, so it's easy to say, you know, I have, I've beaten this team, you know, I've been able to say things like, so far, I beat Cuba City, Cuba City's split with Darlington, I beat Darlington twice, I believe, I believe I deserve a higher seed than Cuba City does, I think I should be the one seed. Coaches can vote on that. If, if I got voted as the two seed, once all the voting is done, then you come through and you can appeal your position, and you are appealing it to the other coaches in the room. I can't vote, if I was appealing to Cuba City, I can't vote and Cuba City can't vote. All the other coaches then determine, based on the information you provide in that appeal process. I know Coach Paul Skil appealed, and like the rest of us, disappointed that the vote went the way it did. I did have a chance to talk with him today and said, do you feel travel had an impact on your kids, on, on the team, having to go that far? And he said, you know, we're in a position to win. I can't say that, I can't say that that bus ride had an impact on the outcome of the game. I felt we were, we were in a great position to win and had every opportunity to get it done, you know, and again, when you have a, a great group of kids like that, it's, it's tough to see that season end short of their ultimate goal, but I can certainly reach out to the WIA and ask, you know, for their guidelines and...
And the outcome of the game is not the reason for the, for my discussion bringing this up tonight, is the idea that we had to take our fans, three hours and, three and a half hours, three hours and 45 minutes up there when, when we were unbeaten. I mean, a lot of people ask me that.
Okay, is there anything else from the board member? Is there anybody signed up?
Yes, we have Parrish Johnston.
Hi, everybody, Parrish Johnston. Um, I periodically come to meetings, and I try to watch as many of them as I can and stay abreast of what's going on, and as a community member, I found myself just shocked by the vote last month to not put Andy Bush back on the school board. I scratched my head about it for a long time. I read the article that Joel put out on the Facebook page, I read the article that Janelle put out in the Democrat Tribune, and in nowhere was there any information about who voted for who. And so I thought that was an interesting question, so I asked Joel, and because of the open record flaw in Wisconsin, she asked Mitch, I was given the information on who voted for Andy in this way. And I know the school board does a lot of public voting, almost everything that you guys vote for outside of a closed session is recorded, which I think is the right way to do it, and I'd like to place an objection to the process of not having that be public information. I think that you're all elected officials, if you're choosing another member of your board, I think we should know who voted for who. I was especially surprised that Andy didn't win, as he had been a school board member for four years in good standing. I hadn't met any sort of conflicts that there had been, he seems like a pretty central, middle-of-the-road personnel, and in the two elections that he had, he won by almost 100 votes in both of them as the top vote getter. And it's just really surprising to me to see this school board make a choice to not put him back on the board. I don't understand, I don't know where that comes from. I don't know if this is trying to get someone who is politically similar to you on the board, and no, no offense to Gary in any way, shape, or form in this situation, it's just more the, just the shock of this. I've known Andy Bush for 30 years of my life, and I've never met anyone who's more interested in the quality of experience that students have in the Mineral Point High School. It seemed like a wonderful chance for him to try to join the administration in an accounting position, where he was required to resign to apply for a job, I, I believe state law required that. And so I would like to make a few statements. For the record, I would like to note that Nate and Aaron and Everett voted for Andy in the first round, with Jeff and Larry and Tony voting no, and then on a second vote, Nate swishes his vote over to Gary. I, I voiced my objections to all of you when Tony was elected on the idea of the hat choosing, and not, nothing, nothing, you know, there were four people, a hat, you know, you've got a 25% chance you got the hat, and I think that's unfortunate. And so I would ask the school board to reconsider what the policies are. I don't know if there was any debate amongst you publicly. I don't know if you can have that conversation amongst school members outside of school or meetings to decide, to discuss who you're voting for, and I, is that, is that allowed? So, my understanding is that there was at least one, if not more than one, phone call that Larry called Everett and had a phone conversation trying to sway his vote. I don't know if that's true or not, I'm not, I'm just saying, this is, this is the information I heard, I'm just trying to have a conversation. Jeff?
I just need to correct that.
Sure.
That's not true.
Okay, then I apologize, Larry.
You should then call USH, you can get a, you can go through the sheriff and get my phone records.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm here.
You should not say that.
I, I was asking a question, I asked you what the policies were, and I asked if there were...
My phone conversations, I think, are still somewhat private.
I believe that they are, and I'm...
You want that not to be private?
I, I'm asking what the rules are.
Are we past this, Jeff?
The policy, the policy has to be changed.
You're correct.
I, 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 a multi, multiple parts of this.
Board members, I can call Erin and I can call Dr. Lindsey, but I cannot talk to those two and another one at the same time.
Sure. Do we, we give, how many minutes do we give a citizen, Jeff? I mean, I think we're about...
We're getting close, Larry.
All right. I, I mean, is this something that you will address? The last time that it happened, there was no address, we, we had this, I had this conversation with all of you after the referendum meeting in November about changing this policy, I came up to each one of the individual board members after...
Honestly, it's on the docket, we just haven't, we just haven't...
So, didn't that, and my question as a citizen is, isn't that something you would want to resolve before you have this vote? This seems like, if you know their objections, if you all are saying that you think there's something wrong with this process, I don't understand your process of going through this situation and not having this discussion before this happened again.
Unfortunately, some of it is just time.
Okay. Do you, can I ask the four members who did not, who voted for Gary, why they voted for Gary over Andy, who had an overwhelming voter turnout? We seem to have, in, in both this and the referendum in November last year, there seemed to be a very...
We're getting into a back-and-forth now, Jeff?
I'm just asking a question. I'm asking a very personal question, Nate.
You, you hit the nail on the head when you stated what you stated earlier.
Sure.
You approached us the last time, I was the one that switched my vote.
Yes.
Because, to me, you know, what happened, happened, but I switched my vote because I didn't want to have to go down that road again, which, yeah, maybe that's not the best way to do it. And, you know, stuck in my mind, would you come into the state?
And I appreciate that, to get your feedback.
And you have, and you basically had your opinion about it, and I agree, okay, so, and I agree with what you're saying, there needs to be a policy change. If you would have given it on the agenda to do that at some point, I'd be...
If you had felt that Andy was the correct choice, which I would assume that your first vote meant that you assumed that.
I agree.
It seemed interesting to me to watch you change your vote and not have Andy have a 50% chance, but go to a 0% chance.
But would you, what would have happened had it went to...
It would have gone to a hat, and so...
And then what would have happened?
I, I think I would have went as well, because I've told you, this is, this is a bad policy. And, and I'm, I'm seeing nods, I'm seeing, and I know Larry's exasperated when he asks me these questions, but I think they're legitimate questions that need to be asked, so that you can have...
Again, you answered your own question right there, I mean...
That was your answer.
Yeah, if it would have went, you know, the other way, you know, not that it's not an important thing, but we have a lot of important things that we have to deal with, and it is a time thing, and you know what? You're more than welcome to declare your candidate, see if you can...
Oh, I understand, and I understand that.
And I hope you do.
And I, I, I understand all that, I, you know, as a, as a citizen of the Mineral Point Schools, I'm asking questions because I find there to be some problems with the process. When I have spoken with you, you have agreed that there are some problems with the process, and in this situation, we've again used a flawed process to make this decision. I don't think that's a good thing. I, I don't think it was a good thing for us to go to a referendum against the school, the town's vote. I don't think it was good to put a school board member on against the town's vote in the last two elections Andy was on. I just find that problematic, and I, I'm happy, and I'm asking, and I appreciate your candor and your honesty in saying that, is it possible for me to get an answer from the other three candidates, or is that asking too much? The other three school members, I apologize for that.
Thank you for coming, Parrish. Off subject, when it's community cleanup day and we send our kids down there to the theater, I appreciate not using swear language, vulgar language.
Sure.
You had one of our teachers crying, that was wrong.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate...
This is not an interaction time?
Well, that's, that's...
No, you have to state, you have three minutes to state what you want. It's not a question and answer.
I, I... Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for clarifying that for me. I appreciate it.
And before we send our kids out to the community, Mitch, let's do a little betting on this.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, no, and that's, and that's good. And I, you know, I, I don't know all the policies, so I appreciate your time. Thank you, Jeff.
I know you're a little upset, Parrish, but everything was done by the book as the board, board book says.
And I'm, I do. And I'm asking that you change it in the future so that we don't have the situation and so the community knows how the board voted in these situations. I think that transparency is important.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's, let us put that on the top of the line, please. Let's have a policy and we'll be working on that as soon as we can. Okay. We can move on.
And if we're going to put things on the agenda as policy, we, we need to vet these people before we send our kids out into the, the community too. If there's been a bad experience, the board needs to know about it.
We have the minutes.
I, I can, I can pass it along then. All right, that's not scheduled through me. All, all of those community things are not brought up through me.
We're, we're still in charge of them kids and they are our responsibility. Yes.
Okay. With the Miller, make a motion to...
Second.
Any comments or corrections?
I will, I, one more thing, Jeff. How did you know who I call and who I don't call, Parrish?
Larry, I told you that it was reported to me and I sincerely apologize to you for having information that was not correct. When someone gave you the information...
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stepas.
What are we voting?
A little minute.
Well, the one that I want to change my vote on, so...
We would have to amend that.
We would. We'll amend it at the time. Well, there will be an amendment then coming up maybe at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
So I abstain.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Bastin.
Yes. Okay. Items for information discussion, school board election tag on.
So the deadline for public notification is November twenty-sixth. Earliest date for circulation nomination paper is December first. If you are running, you have deadline of December twenty-seventh at five P.M. Deadline for incumbents to file notice of non-candidacy.
If you're not...
If you are not running in the April election, and that would be Member Bastin, Member Dahl, and Member Sullivan, those seats are, what are the seats that come up in this current, in the, in the April deadline, okay?
They have to let you know by the twenty-seventh.
If you are not planning to run.
Which is the Friday after Christmas at five o'clock. And I would really appreciate it.
When do we let you know?
Not having to be here the Friday after Christmas.
So when can you start letting you know that?
Anytime. That is the last date to do...
So hypothetically, if I, if I don't sign that paper, I'm not automatically on the ballot. I still would have to sign candidacy papers.
You still have to sign candidacy papers, yes.
And that deadline is January seventh at five P.M.
But the deadline gets extended if there's an incumbent who does not file either orders.
Okay. I don't, I, it's not going to be a problem.
Okay.
Eighteen years, Jeff. It's long enough. It's time for somebody else to step up. Okay, budget comparison.
Okay, so looking at the budget, a year ago at this time, we had spent a little over twenty-seven percent of our budget. So about a quarter, a little over a quarter of the budget at this point in time. And remember that the fiscal year starts July one. And money is, are being spent out in the summer for classroom supplies. If you look at, then this current year, we're slightly under twenty-seven percent spent out of the budget. So we're, so the budget's a little bit higher than it was a year ago, so we're relatively close in, in how we're spending our money out throughout this, throughout this school year so far, throughout this fiscal year. So I, I would say we're probably in a similar situation and, and we're in a good financial position right now.
Okay. It just arrived here. Pass around some videos here. Just my extra copies here, too. So Mitch has a... There's that here.
This is, yeah, this is what you sent me.
So for you is a phasing plan. We'll touch on that a little bit. And then updated floor plans of where we're at. I did bring Kylie from our office as well. She's the interior designer. So if you've been at a couple of corridor, corridor team meetings, she's been involved as well. We do have some examples that we're looking at as well and we can more happy to start to share those as well. So while Mitch is kind of pulling it up, apologize, I think I sent you the wrong, I sent you the updated floor plans. One of the first things that he wanted to talk about was construction phasing. So in front of you is a, um, similar conversation involved construction phasing, being that we're trying to occupy the building while, or occupy the building while we're under construction. This does become pretty important. So what we're trying to do is establish parameters for the contractors to really work within. You'll notice we have the color-coded plan here. We're basically in a nutshell trying to start on the building addition first and work on that area from spring and then basically have that area become occupied. What that allows is us to do the addition independent of doing any renovation. And then it'll allow us to move kiddles into that area while we work on the existing part. It alleviates having to bring in temporary classrooms. It alleviates having to displace multiple grade levels. It really helps with overall staging of the process. One of the big conversations is when to potentially go into, and then, yeah, sorry about that. When to really go to the, the heavy renovation areas. So what we're looking at is some of the areas that we talked about previously that have extensive demolition or removing the floor slab. That is something that I think through conversations at the core team meetings, we don't feel comfortable doing while school's occupied. For the first few months of that, it's going to be quite noisy and would be disruptive to educational experience within the building. So we wanted to have a potential timeline that's appropriate. The first few months there, we're planning on moving the floor slab and pretty extensive work within there. So we're looking at starting that actually in the summer, so not this first summer, but actually the second summer and then going into October. It's more sculpt that we believe can happen over a summertime period and that's really where that timeline comes from within there. So we can touch on that a little bit more, but this is what we're looking at for a potential timeline of the entire project. Through some conversations, and I know nothing's been finalized yet, we've been potentially talking about having some options for moving some kiddles, maybe even out of this facility. And I think that would lend itself to the construction process to have more flexibility as we shift things around. Basically, every classroom, every space is being touched in some capacity and with the amount of work within this facility, I think that would open up some options as well. Any questions on construction phasing?
Because when you talk about moving students around, I, I don't realize what you mean by that, I guess.
So basically, we're, we're taking, say, in this heavy dash area, there's eight classrooms currently in that location. We're putting in five classrooms in that area. So we're basically displacing and moving them around to make that all happen. So when we're under construction, they cannot occupy that space. So what we're planning is to utilize other spaces, like the library space, subdivide that for a certain short time period and utilize that for that time period while that area is being finished up. So for a few cripple losses, those kind of displacing, they'll shift it around. And that's continued conversations to really minimize that. But I think we do want to plan for the worst and really have options there.
So we're doing the addition first?
We're doing the addition first, so that...
If we vote on it that way.
Yeah, if, and that's all, this is not very much up for conversation.
Summer, summer twenty-twenty, ten, on the addition.
Uh, so the addition, yeah, it'll start, yeah, twenty-twenty. So it'll start in April and then go through the summer. And you complete it in June.
You, you won't have it completed in the summer work time period?
No, that's about a twelve-month construction time.
Well, you, do you plan on doing any, any work in the, in the existing part?
Um, so we're giving options within there. So the, the hash area, area two, will allow for either the first summer or the second summer. But we're requiring that to happen over a summertime period.
I see it's up here.
So I got this per...
I mean, I, your reasoning makes a lot of sense. Create an extra classroom space, extra space. What I'm nervous about, Tim, is if we get into that, the existing part, and we find the unknowns, we're all hoping that they're not there, but maybe they are. So either A, we run out of money and we can't do the exist, the existing part, or the worst, worst-case scenario is the existing part, we, we find some really structural problems with it and has to be condemned and then we're tearing it down and starting over there.
Yeah. I mean, there's always unknowns. And then we do a renovation, there's unknowns. And we try to minimize those as much as we can. However, you're, you're, I mean, to be honest, there's still some unknowns and there always will be within a conversation like this.
Logistics, from what I've heard.
From a timeframe perspective, we're covering ourselves. Because this is a very conservative timing. What we're also doing is we'll make this part of construction documents, which actually means that it's contractual at that point. So being that it's contractual, the contractors has to meet these dates. So that's why we're being conservative in these conversations, because I want to make sure I'm not excluding contractors from doing this work either. So I want to open up as much competition through this, through this conversation, but yet have some parameters that have something to them.
So what happens if a contractor, if you hire Larry and he's, he's a week behind? So he's a week behind, then we're, there is no way of making that up?
So they, they will make it up and how they make it up is they do overtime at, usually at their expense. They'll start working Saturdays, they'll start working overtime shifts to meet those dates. If ultimately they don't meet their construction dates, they'd be the default of the contract.
But then you're sitting with having to find somebody to replace them.
Correct. So you, you don't get to that, right?
I'm nervous about doing, doing the construction first for the same reason that Larry's talking. Has anybody given any thought to checking into, seeing if we could rent the old St. Mary's school right here?
Roger and I have had that conversation and part of it will hinge on the decisions that have happened here.
I mean, is that, is that a possibility? I mean, the school hasn't been used as a school for a number of years. We used to, we used to rent it years ago for a couple of classes and...
If we can't rent that, then...
I mean, I don't think the church would be, would be our problem is whether or not the state will permit it.
Right.
We'd have to do like asbestos testing and what else can you do to make sure that it's safe?
And isn't asbestos okay as long as it's sealed?
Usually it's always not disturbed or open. But we can also, you know, go back to the, what are called portable classrooms. But the problem I have is, I'm, I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm afraid that if we put this, whatever that is, two or three million dollar addition on, and then all of a sudden we find out the foundation stuff that we don't know. It's like if I was building on my house and my foundation wasn't quite good, I don't think I'd be putting on foundation, an addition first and then going in to fix my foundation. And I tell you what, that's, that's a lot of money. What is that, two or three million dollars are you talking, at least? And then we go underneath and all of a sudden we're like, oh crap, we can't do this. And then we have a brand new addition there.
It really has...
And we gotta go back to the voters and ask for more money?
So that's where, you know, the accuracy and the budgeting and accuracy in this process is very important. The reality is with the utility connections and the mechanical work that we're doing within this portion, we need those systems up and running before we can tie in. When we remove that floor slab and those, and those floors and the walls, there's a block bill associated with that. We have to upgrade the entire service. We have to upgrade all the mechanical system. And that type of scope of work cannot happen over a summertime period.
I understand that.
So we can't demolish it and we can't displace eight classrooms during that time period.
But I don't think it's even safe. I, I don't even know how it's going to be safe and how good it's going to be when kids are there. You know, a lot of this, I've been, you know, I've been in education on the life. I've been in renovations, I've been in additions. And you can't teach because you've got that loud equipment going on, it's right there. Plus then you have recess and the kids, you know, all the kids love big equipment, you know, you gotta make sure they're not around that and it's just, it's, it's a mess. And that's why I, personally, my, as you all know, my belief is to get portable classrooms, get it done. Put the kids in portable classrooms, get it done, and put them back in school.
Move all the kids, just put them off-site?
Yep. It's a better state than sorry, in my opinion.
And if that's a legitimate option, I think it's worth exploring. That, it would accelerate these timelines significantly.
How much would it take out of our budget to do something like that in terms of limiting what we can do?
It, it all depends on where, what kind of portables you're talking, where you're talking from getting it from. The challenge of portables is they meet the same life safety codes that a permanent structure does. I've seen them run per classroom, ten to twenty thousand of them.
Per classroom?
A classroom.
Okay. When's the last project, when's the last time you did a project that required portables?
Um, we don't see it. Do the last... Port, there was no portables in Barburg. So we're able, from a phasing perspective, in my opinion, that was actually a more complicated phasing project. You're having, you're... You just don't see us have those costs.
Let me, let me just have you clarify one more thing. The, what's being implied at this table tonight is that there's a chance that when you uncover the foundation, it will be such a worst-case scenario that we will need to abort the entire plan. And I know that people have been around remodels, but to ask someone who has a degree in this and, and has looked at the cores that have been done in the foundation, given the fact that you've tried to limit the unknowns to a minimum, give me the worst-case scenario here. Let's say it's, it's an open pit of nothing. Can you fill it with whatever you need to fill it with to restore the foundation within the three million, two to three million that you have budgeted? I mean, give me, I, I, I need to make sure that, are we staring at a realistic worst-case scenario of this foundation remodel, remediation project taking up half the budget to the point where we need to rethink the entire thing?
I, I don't think so. I really don't. I think we're planning for the worst and the worst is what we're budgeting as well. I don't believe when we uncover it, we're going to find anything that we can't fix within these timelines.
Okay, thank you. Now, as far as, as far as flipping the timeline, remediating the foundation first, then doing the addition. Obviously, you're, you're favoring the, the new addition first so that we have place to put the kids. And that, if I'm understanding you right, it makes sense to connect the upgraded mechanical electrical if the new addition is already in place? Is that correct? Can you talk about disadvantages or added costs of flipping the timeline?
So if we were to.
If there are any?
I mean, there's, there's always options, um, to discuss further. Um, to be able to flip that and start with the addition or the renovation portion first, um, we'd have to, we'd have to feed all the utilities within the existing part of the building and then feed out from there. Um, we would displace, and that's something that we would build over a summertime period. Um, we would make the building more of the unoccupiable for the first semester. To build up to cheaper.
Okay, one more question. It's my understanding that the water damage slash problem has never really been corrected? Is that correct?
It's still present, but it's correct.
And the only true way to solve that problem is the addition?
Um, the, I don't know if it's fully accurate, but the addition does help to mitigate the stormwater around there, um, getting.
But you'll be able to, basically you're going to solve the problem because you're putting the addition over the problem?
It will assist in that. Um, the other issue is.
Well, which is an argument for doing.
The addition first.
Addition first.
Yeah. It, the level of unknown, I think it's at a reasonable level here, um, what we're, what we're given. Um, we're planning basically new construction in that area. Um, we're brand new felt. The challenge is more that the building is occupied. If this was new construction, doing this type of work would be actually pretty straightforward. The challenge is that it's an occupied building while we're doing it and the timeframes that we're under more than anything.
In, in one of our meetings, didn't you share that if you, if you have to put temporary power and temporary water, those kinds, that that would add to the total cost of the project?
Yeah, the more temporary conversations, the more temporary utility setups. Um, the switchovers are not, you know, a light switch, you know, they're very complicated actually. And, uh, and then if we set up a permanent, if we bring water to the facility and we have to set up it twice, there's double expense potentially for a lot of utility setups. A lot of it has to, yeah.
I believe that you, you, you've done your due diligence and, I mean, you've done how many scans and how many borings and so forth. I mean, you're the expert.
I mean, we hired you to do what's best for this project, right? Within our budget to maximize the taxpayers' money and to do it in a, a reasonable timeline. And this is what you're recommending, correct?
I, I think it's a good solution.
Okay.
With parameters.
I'm interested in kind of what Tony said though, because it, it, if no kids were there, no staff was there.
Talking about disrupting education while it's being built.
Get it done.
And you wouldn't have to have fifteen portables?
You would, if we could.
I'd be interested in. Well, I'm interested.
Something like that because that would, I mean.
The problem is.
That would be such, it'd be, you'd not that quick, but.
So this will.
Maybe that quick.
This is a problem. It's a two year.
Right, so. I think it's, so the question is, what, what kind of price tag do you want to put on? And I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but, uh, what kind of price tag do we want to put on a shorter timeline? Right, to have it done within a year? And, you know, there's some intangible prices like disrupting education. Are we just going to have a really disruptive year because you're building these huge things right next door? I mean, I get all that. So, I mean, it sounds like the portables are, it sounds like the portables are pretty costly.
Yeah.
But, I mean, do we have?
I don't think we have options.
I mean, gosh, I'm spending a whole year on a different site.
Can we hold everybody back here or just?
Would the, would the elementary staff want to do such a thing?
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't even think about voting or anything without even getting comments from the staff.
It would be very difficult to find a new place, but it would be worth it. Do they, I mean, I've, I've seen portables and work, you know, been around those. Do they actually have restrooms and things in them now? Or some of them I've had where they've been, have to be close to the building because students have to run into the other class, the actual building and already use a restroom and all those.
And that's where a lot of the costs come from.
If St. Mary's would work. We have the old, the old high school gyms for sale that I would imagine they would be happy to rent for a year.
There's like eight classrooms over there.
I think there's.
I think seven or eight.
I know there's four on the first floor.
And one in the kitchen.
Yep.
And we could even, if, if we had to, maybe worst, worst, we could even use like.
I mean, wouldn't that be disruptive? I mean, trying to cram a whole.
Well, you wouldn't cram a whole, just have the, you have eight classrooms, you put the eight classrooms in. Then you have to find where you're going to put the other stuff.
Where is, where are they going to do recess?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Where's gym class? I mean, I, I, it, it seems like, I mean, I know that having noise going on while class is happening, I know that that is disruptive and I know you can't put a amount of problem with that. Um, but, you know, with this timeline, we're basically looking at displacing kids for three months. You know, and that's, that's better than a whole year. Plus you could move most of them into the library. I mean, it, it's not ideal for.
It's only the first level where it's.
It's all.
The first level, I see.
The second level will be pretty much occupable. That's really a summer kind of turnover, the, the second level.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's really where.
That's why I'm suggesting St. Mary's, because this week it'd take a whole bunch out of the lard and ore.
Right. When do we have to make this decision on how, how the kids are moved? Or would, we, you probably need approval on this phase, this timeline first.
So, you know, there's, it, it does an impact of how we're designing it. Um, and we're at the point where we're making kind of decisions based off this timeline. If it were to shift, there could be some potential differences. It will sound like electrical service, when we, where we put the boilers, when we do the boilers, some of those kind of conversations. But we have a little bit of time to have this conversation yet. I, if, if there is any flexibility, I would say if we could move one or two grade levels out, that would gain a ton of flexibility to this planning. Because then we can utilize the existing classrooms. Um, when we have spaces like the gym up and running, we then can use the cafeteria space. We can, you know, we have all those kind of options within there, um, for short time periods. It's, when we keep the fully, when the building is fully occupied like it is now, there's just not that many options to be able to say, hey, can you take this classroom for a semester?
I guess, I got a couple of questions. I know the old home bathroom is not being used. Is that correct or is it being storage or what's in that room right now?
It's, it's not used every hour of the day.
Okay.
So, I mean, there is, there is possibilities.
And I'm certainly not suggesting to bring students up here, but I'm thinking, you know, anything that's going to save us money from renting another place.
I'm thinking the same thing, Gary.
What's available up here? And I know there's going to be parents out there that we don't want our students interacting with high schools. We're going to have to just deal with it. These high school kids are not out to assault your kids.
Well, especially if it's fifth graders or.
We're here, we're here to try and make the best possible situation. We all knew when this thing was passed that we're going to be dealing with either construction with our kids or what? We can't change that. That's in the referendum material.
Right.
So I'm looking at the best options, cheapest way.
I, I don't think, and I'm not speaking for St. Mary's or Paul or anything like that, but I'm sure they would be very, they would negotiate a very nice price.
Old Lutheran Church is empty.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not looking that direction though. I'm not looking at that part of the table.
Okay, so is this something that can be explored? I mean, it sounds like you would like to move a grade somewhere other than the library, right?
Yeah, ideally.
What does it take for us to get asbestos testing at those sites? So it's a good pull call?
Yeah, EMC is your contractor, they would, they'd be liable for that.
That costly.
I think we should do that forward.
My, it's my last, it's not, it's not a point or a question. This is completely out of your control. You look at the weather we've had over the last eighteen months, you're not going to get this done in that timeframe. I'm going to tell you right now, it won't happen. And that's out of your control, but.
So weather is always a factor.
Yep. And I don't care if they don't work weekends. There's times this year you cannot work. Here, Nate, you and I know.
Weather is always a factor.
You're looking at possible two-year job if it don't change. And so now we're looking at kids being in different places for possible two school years if things don't change. And we can't predict that.
So this is, this, this is.
Assuming winter weather.
This is assuming weather, weather.
I'm talking summer, I'm talking summer weather.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
I mean, this is assuming, you know, this addition is relatively clean.
Yep.
It's a relatively straightforward. Um, yes, weather is always a factor. However, with this type of construction, um, I mean, you see tents, tenting.
Or is it maybe a small, you see.
Yeah, it's kind of. I guess with these overall timeframes, I think they're, um, conservative enough that there's some flexibility within there. Um, I do however, know that if we put a phasing plan like this, that some contractors just won't be interested in this project. And I think that's exactly why we want this phasing plan as part of it. As we want to make sure that they truly understand the phasing components to these projects.
Would the, uh, the contractor that will do the addition be the same one? Do you envision the same one to do the renovation?
Yeah, we'd do it all as one, one or.
You don't, you don't think it's possible?
His question was if you're using Erin to do the, the addition, you're also going to use Erin to do the remodel.
Exactly. It, it'd be very, yes, so, yep.
Wow, okay, sorry.
To do this, uh, to do this renovation, Tim, I mean, three months is a long. Most of it's interior work.
Sure.
I know weather still could be an issue. What kind of price take would we add to the project if instead of putting twenty people on it, put forty people in there and getting it done in three months?
The, the unknown is still, um, it's the, once you rip off the slab, I'd rather over, or how it says, once you rip that out, there's still some unknowns. So if everything goes best case here, I think it would be realistic, um, to be able to complete it. However, at this stage, um, I think adding an extra couple of months in there is a very good planning.
I mean, it is a possibility Mitch, to delay the start of school for the elementary only for a couple of weeks.
They have less time required of them.
Correct, so we, we do have that in our favor. I think there's a lot of worry for nothing. I think we get Tim to go ahead, get the, get the existing, the basement level done, try to get it done. In the summer of twenty twenty, October, start, start the new addition. One month, two weeks into this, we're going to know what we're looking at. And then I'd feel more comfortable saying, go ahead with the addition. So we do that in June, the additional start in October. And Tony, I, and I understand, but they, they do it all the time. I mean, it'd be no different than a, I get it, I'm on the same, I'm on the same side of this as you are. I know it's a mess.
Have real problems and I just, yeah.
The challenge is to have this be occupied come fall. You get into lead time issues with the equipment. You get into, um, any hiccups, your chillers, your, your large equipment. That's where your challenge is going to be is getting.
And we're going to know that, Tim, and we, the board will have to have a contingency and maybe the elementary kids will have to go. And I know that's going to then alter the next summer's phasing plan, but maybe the kids will have to start the first of October instead of the first of September.
I, I think it.
I, it's not perfect.
That's a month. You don't have a month built in.
That, that I don't.
But I, I know, I know Jeff, but then they may, they may have to go until the middle of June.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that a little because.
I, I understand.
Two weeks maybe, but four weeks, you're, you don't have time, you don't have enough time in four weeks, but.
And I, we've had this, this discussion at least twice. There, I, I believe there is room for the fifth grade in this building. It would be tight, but I think, I think we could accommodate that.
When I was in eighth grade, the Boyle, the middle school, they fit everybody into the high school.
Yeah, and they're going to tell you no.
Why no?
They're going to tell you no.
But what happened back then, they were in a situation, they had to do something, plans were made and it worked.
Yeah.
Bottom line, it worked.
It's about sacrifice in this situation.
Would this be a building they have kids forever?
No.
First few years?
No.
First three months?
We never got moved out of the old high school.
Did you?
Nope.
So, so we are, you know, doing that is because we're taking specialized spaces. We're putting classrooms on to that space. So what we're saying is we want to have a library for certain type of it. By saying we're wanting to have classrooms. So some of those logistics are called, um, we're taking specialized spaces. And the one specialized space is.
I understand. Library, I think we've been, we can get over that earlier.
So there's, how costly do you think it would be to have that test on the St. Mary's school for asbestos thing? Do you have a ballpark at all?
Yeah, EMC, two K M S, they're pretty.
I can never either.
They're, they're pretty.
The test is already supported. They're, they're pretty.
I'm just thinking, wow, just like to move this on, I think, I think we need, I really think we need to do that test, find out if that facility is an option. And then I think we should read back in two weeks to make a final decision on how you want to phase this. Because I don't think we should put it on too much longer.
No, I, it was get it done.
But I think we need, it would just make it so much easier if we could take, even if we took the five or six classes. And I would suggest kindergarten first and second over to St. Mary's, St. Paul.
That, that is the area of the building that this work needs to take place. It would be the preschool and, I mean, it's current kindergarten at first grade. So you could lay the preschool upstairs while this construction is going on.
But, you know, the desks are still over there, I think.
I think everything, but they have caddies in there, so, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, literally, we could take the kid over. I mean, that's, that's my suggestion.
How would they do like, you know, then you got to think of like food and everything.
They got a kitchen, kitchen, they got the multi-purpose room. Just have to take it over.
Just figure it out.
They have the connection.
Larry, you're basically doing all of that at the same time, essentially. Is that, starting with them.
Starting with them, yeah.
But initially tying them pretty much together. I.
Would we be able to do that before we did that?
I don't know. I, I, I don't have a problem. It's all going to be cut and it's just kind of. I mean, today, in today's era of the school security, that would have to be researched, moving our kids offsite, uh, to, to an outdated school, to an outdated building.
They just keep all the doors locked and even there's an office on the end where people have to come in. They're at the window.
It's a great building. You're wrong for that.
What, okay, so, Tim, you need approval of this phasing timeline?
Not necessarily. Um, so what we've already did is we've been talking about it last few meetings and we wanted to present it to the board to get a greater conversation about this. I think it's an important part of the integral process. To be honest, what keeps us moving forward, um, we're looking at the floor plan and the layout and some adjacencies that we're showing right now.
Why don't you, can you finish your presentation and then we can talk about.
Yep, absolutely.
What to do from here.
So I can, uh, maybe Mitch, go back to the schedule, uh, when we were inside briefly. Kind of talk. So here's where we're at in our overall development. Um, this file is very similar to the schedule we've seen before. Um, basically this is a more, um, developed or more detailed schedule. Now that we're getting a little bit closer to what we're, when we're looking to bid this out. Um, so we're fine tuning our refinement, um, we're really talking about interior finishes. Uh, last meeting, we talked a lot about the mechanical shell plumbing and we're looking to release this in the last week of January, um, for a bid date of two twenty-five. Um, so we have a bid walkthrough, we have a state review set up. So things are definitely, uh, we're moving in the right direction, um, as a timeline. We have some internal milestones to make sure that we get progress as we keep going as well. So just some more details of the ones that we were shown before. Um, floor plan, same ones that's in front of you as well. Uh, so we're at the point where things are, shifts are getting quite a bit smaller. Um, and have much more detailed conversations. Uh, there last month, we really haven't made any significant changes. Um, and I think, uh, everything is, I'm, um, much more focused on more engineering aspects. Um, so the floor plan has stayed very similar, um, and we're just continuing to refine it, um, itself. There's been a couple of tweaks here and there, um, based on conversations around some of those conversations. But I think by far this floor plan looks identical to the last board meeting. And then similar here as well. Um, here's the phasing plan, uh, there, just look at that.
Is area three will be the most, um, disruptive phasing plan? The heaviest construction as far as the remodeling?
Correct, absolutely. Yeah, that's the most extensive. Area one, the building addition, um, we do building addition, but we're trying to be building outside, so that's not a concern. Um, when we start talking about removing, removing concrete floor slabs and, um, undercutting and filling, like we're talking about, that's what becomes much worse.
Sure. And Tim, do you think that if we take area three and then the offices to the right of that, the rest of the old building and keep the new addition, which is to the left of it, we could use that new addition if construction got delayed in area three? I'm just trying to.
Yes, I think you'd be able to use the addition.
And, and the upper level?
Yep, yep, I think you'd be able to, because fundamentally, we're adding spare footage to the facility and we're not increasing the kids.
And you get direct access right through the front for construction equipment and the logistics. I could see that being a viable option. If we could get the fifth grade up here for a month or two. Again, it's not going to be perfect, it's not a big sacrifice, it's not everybody's part of this. This whole project is a sacrifice.
And then I did want to maybe touch on some of our interior finish conversations that we've been having as well. So we've been having a lot of flooring conversations, we've been having public conversations and a lot of joint planning as well.
Hi, everyone. This is my first board meeting, so I'm not going to be here. So this is very new to us. I think we've only had about one and two meetings on some of the interior finishes, so on the carpet and the flooring. The staff kind of got to saw or got to see some things last meeting. So we kind of break it down, we start with flooring, we kind of talk about the different areas. So as you're entering into the building, you know, we deal with snow and water and salt. You guys use some hefty salt out there, I have to say. So we need to protect our floors coming into the building and then flooring throughout the rest of the space. We have to consider, you know, who's six and how teachers teach and our kids getting on the floor, kids, you know, moving places where things are getting food being served, athletic spaces and things like that. So I don't know, I don't know much time we have, so I don't want to dive in too deep. I do have some handouts here that kind of explain different flooring we're looking at, such as carpet, carpet tiles. We're looking at doing, you know, obviously, manner of point is blue, so keeping some of the blue community throughout the whole space, but also...
I'm going to answer the orange.
But I did show some other colors to the teachers last week to bring in some other fun colors as well, not just all blue. But this is a carpet tile, so just a little difference, you were standing on a broadloom carpet. So if something happened to this, you guys would have to like cut out a section. Whereas this is, this is a tile, so this is what it is. And it gets laid down, so if anything needs to be replaced, just one has to come up and a new one has to come in its place. So that's some carpet that we're talking about in different areas. And then I think you guys are used to terrazzo in your buildings. But we're looking at what's called an LBT product.
Another thing that we're really trying to figure is to have a little more of a warm-up color palette. Bring us some more of this facility. We have some natural stones, we're also looking at some wood decking, bringing in natural light from above. So bring in some of this warmer finishes within here as well.
Yes. But yeah, so then LBT, this is just a flooring, this is a hard surface. This is what we'll see probably majority of the space besides like classrooms and library spaces. It's actually a really heavy thick product, what you can see. And again, if something happens, just one has to come out and a new one can be replaced. And it's a multi-layered system. What's nice about this is it doesn't need to be waxed, so I don't know if any, no cleaning.
BCT is prevalent everywhere, that's a low upfront cost, but a heavy long-term cost because it's a concert.
Do I feel, oh yeah, that's a not feel.
So how do you clean it, do you vacuum it or do you wash it?
No, you wash it. The maintenance crew just needs to get, it's like a special scrubber that they made for it and they'll just use like a cleaner and use their machines. They can mop it, they can sweep it. It's a pretty great product. So if you, this is, this also can be a loose lane, we don't do loose lane heavy partial. But it can literally just be laid down and doesn't have to have a glue application. And everything that we're showing is really sustainable. Things can be recycled back into themselves. A lot of these are recycled contents or recycled product. And a lot of the carpet companies now offer where they'll take your old carpet and recycle it for. So it comes in, yeah, feel it. Comes in a whole bunch of different finishes, different colors, things like that. I think the only thing different between, I hope I brought it, yes, walk-off carpet is what goes in the entryway. So you might want to feel this, it has some of that grit, it has water absorption properties.
What's the mechanism for cleaning this thing?
Sorry, what was that?
How do they clean this thing?
Carpet is cleaned with a shampooer every, you know, once a year, vacuumed. And what's great about carpet nowadays is technology is such so amazing and how carpet is produced. So it won't stain as easy, the fibers can't hold stains like they used to or like how like, you know, this carpet would pull onto that. Usually if that's spot cleaned within 24 hours, the stain will come out, so.
So would that square that you're holding there ever, we've kind of recreated that with the carpets that we have in this building right now, with the Berber and in the main office. If you come in the main office in the high school, you'll notice that that carpet in front of Janet's desk is a little bit different than the rest of the hallway. And it's the same principle that it's designed to collect more dirt, take that water and hold on to it to get rid of it a little bit better than just standard carpet.
It's also our goal to extend that, so it's called walk-off. We like to extend it as far as we can out of the vestibule because the longer run of that material, the better you're going to protect and make this material last. It's been taken more off the foot the longer it is, so.
What's the average life of some of this stuff?
So there's a life cycle cost chart, I think.
I'll tell you the next sheet, what it tells you.
Okay. These guys are gifted.
So this is a really basic comparison of different flooring types as long as the useful product life. So what this is, is typically the warranty period and usually the product will last the warranty period.
Yeah, so warranty on LBT and carpet is between 10 and 15 years. So we kind of like to say that the product should ugly out before it wears out. Again, the beauty though of the tile system is that if carpet, if one is really bad, you just need to take that one out and shampoo that one. Or if you need to replace it, then you're not replacing the whole floor. But walk-off...
Is there much of a color discrepancy when you replace segments?
No, usually, the way the technology and the wear layer on top of these and the diallops, all the colored is like a digital print. So we're not really dealing with diallop issues. The only thing that we see is it does have some UV protectants on it, but if it's sitting in a majority of sunlight, we might see a discrepancy there. But not like how we used to, especially with VCT and other products, such as that. The only thing that I would say is that the, this is probably going to have the less life because of just the wear and tear it's going to take. And especially in the heavy traffic, you'll start to see maybe your traffic flow pattern, not necessarily like wearing down the product, just it's going to get gross. I mean, we're scraping our feet on this and the salt is eating at it. So that, but that is the purpose of it is to just, so we'll probably get maybe five, six years out of something like this versus the 10 to 15. Yeah, any other questions for me after that? I don't want to take up too much time.
Our next meeting is actually with elementary staff. We'll be showing some more three-dimensional images as well as sort of finalizing those selections of the flooring options of the color schemes of all of these spaces as well.
Yeah, and I do have, if you guys came down if you want, but this is just what we've been showing at the last meetings. This explains a little different floor and in this, we talked a little bit about color psychology. So we do have a rhyme and a reason why we choose some colors versus just, yeah. Just be, not just the blue, even though we love the blue, it's great to work with, so.
What are you going to say, we love the blue?
We do love the blue. I have to say, so some of the past schools have been red and orange, whoa, those are hard colors to work with. So.
To be honest with you, I walked into a carpet store and it all looks the same to me.
I know, that gives, you know, I have to kind of joke, so I'm like, oh, you gentlemen, I don't want to hear you talk about color obviously, I could.
I just asked Tim if you put something in there that's going to look nice.
Oh yes, we will make this space look, and our goal is to make this space feel not only elementary, but also community. I mean, not just elementary students are entering this building every day. We have staff, we have advisors, you know, community members, teachers, things like that, so.
You may have told us, the classrooms will be carpet.
So we're looking at a prior combination.
Like a third, a third of hard surface and then the two-thirds carpet.
In each classroom?
Yes.
So as you walk in, we have a sink and that'll be a hardened surface right around the sink. And that'll also be centered in the corridor or hallway. And then as you go further into the classroom, it'll be carpet.
Polies then will be? I don't think they do.
We're proposing LBT.
Is there a final...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Yes, we're all class one again.
The only thing that we will be a little bit different will be the pre-K and the kindergarten, they kind of agreed on a different product. It's called Kinetix. And this, this stuff is amazing.
It's a hybrid between carpet and marpure.
So it feels a little different, but they've done a lot of tests on it. And actually, you can leave, they've left motor oil, nail polish, and it just pools on the top. So if you like trick your water right now and just dunk it a little bit, it doesn't, yeah, I mean, it won't absorb. It'll just, you could literally just move it in its way. It can be sanitized. I think they were talking, Roger was letting us know that there's sometimes some, some sanitary thing, accident, thank you, that happen in those grade levels, so it can be sanitized. It's completely 100% recycled back into itself. So it's quite an amazing product.
Putting the right product in the right location is really what it comes down to, while giving it still less of an institutional feel and more...
And flooring technology has evolved and changed.
It is amazing.
And this is some of the best on market.
You get what you're paying for. And you know, we budget this stuff, you definitely put your life...
Maybe a little.
Good life cycle costs with this. These are very much on the list. They will hold up.
Yes, and we, we don't pull anything that we know that is, you know, we'll ensure everything lasts, everything has great, you know, years of, you know, we use all the companies that have been around for years and constantly growing, constantly trying to reach those, you know, certifications for buildings and things like that.
An cert for you.
Yeah, so it's certainly, yes.
You're aware of timelines, I mean, cement may not be fully cured when we're putting this stuff down and there's, we're having problems in this building, of course.
Yeah, moisture radiation is a real conversation, especially when we accelerate timelines. What we typically do is when we do accelerate timelines, we plan for moisture mitigation. It's basically a top hole treatment that puts up the concrete to seal it at that point. And then you can apply adhesive down. Because in general, all adhesives are a little bit of water-based, they aren't as good as the oil-based adhesives that we used to have. And that's where these timelines, when they do get compressed, become a little bit more of an issue.
Yeah, we're also using a carpet that for that reason. It's an open cell back, so it's not a vinyl hardback that you'll see on the ground. So it breathes. Nothing can come through the top, but everything can come out the back. So if there is any moisture issues, you won't see issues with the carpet starting to come up or rip up, it'll just breathe through. So it's pretty cool technology.
And Tim, you would say our timeline that you're proposing is conservative, not compressed, correct?
At this current stage, it's conservative for this level of construction.
Okay. My other question with allergies is just off-gassing of new materials. I know that, I mean, has that been an issue with other new school projects that kids are getting sick or complaining of?
The great thing is owners and architects and everybody else have barely been pushing the industry to limit the off-gassing and really limit the VOC content of now these products, really all products. As mentioned, the adhesives, that was a direct result of those conversations. So they're going to water-based adhesives. To be honest, they aren't as good as the adhesives, but they're better than VOC.
Yeah, and the products, all these products here is, like I said, they want to meet their certifications. They want to be put in these buildings that are going for their lead and their green guard and all these big names. So actually, these products don't, they vowed there's no VOC off-gassing because they want to be in those hospital clinics that are going for those huge certifications. So it comes down to adhesive, so.
But no, that is a very real conversation. It's getting better, it's not perfect, but it is getting, going in the right direction.
Yes. So is there any other questions on here? So again, we're in very early stages. Next meeting is probably our next biggest finish meeting with staff and with the core team. So we're all just kind of starting to dive into these finishes, so.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for having me, so.
Okay. Is that it, that's it?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions we're got, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
So is our plan of action to contact St. Mary's and see if that's an occupied space and...
Wow, sorry, sorry. Few different options, right? Tim, I think the board would feel better knowing with a little more solid understanding of what our, what our plans are to put these kids during these construction in occupied spaces. You know, especially if, I mean, I know Plan A is to put some of them in the new library, right? But you still are looking for maybe another grade to go someplace.
So this plan as it presented, we wouldn't have to displace anybody from this facility.
You would not?
We would be able to capture all that. So this plan was assuming that there would be no upgrade displace offsite.
That's the key term, offsite.
Yeah.
Some of those kids might be in the library or in the gymnasium, they would not be in that classroom.
Especially for the three-month potential time period there.
Okay, so this, your current, under your current proposal, the kids would move to the new addition mainly in the library, maybe some spaces around in the gym area? Okay, and you were going to wall them off and?
Yeah, yeah, temporary type of setup.
Okay.
And did you also, was it this, this phasing, you said some contractors are not going to be interested in?
I think they'll make sure that they're capable of achieving this type of scope where they're kind of working.
So did I ever get a table on this thing?
Jeff, could I, could I talk to you just since you guys are on this? I'm not sure if all of you checked your emails, but since you're discussing this and Tim, I didn't include you in my email, I wanted to throw it out to you. Morgan and Laura approached me last week and they're extremely thankful that you've considered moving the pre-K and EC classrooms downstairs. But under the current projection, we're moving the two bathrooms from that shared giant area down to one bathroom and one bathroom with an external, with an external entry. And they're concerned with, then they still only have one bathroom between the two of them. So they had put together an email and I shared it out with Mitch and all of the board members, basically trying to not move the two bathroom configuration in what is now the current kindergarten classroom, which will be the EC 4K classroom. Obviously, they know they might want to update some finishes or whatnot, but they feel the need to have two bathrooms accessible for their two classrooms. The morning section between the two of them has about 20 students, the afternoon has about 30. And in the morning alone, there are probably four or five working on toilet training at this time. So if they're toilet training with those students, that takes that bathroom away for all of the rest of the students to be able to use. And then they would have to leave the room, go around the corner, out of eyesight, which just didn't seem very feasible for a four-year-old to work while in their situation. So they just asked me to make sure that, I say that to all of you again, putting in that request that they're under the understanding that it was changed to an external door to give an individual bathroom access in the building. But there are individual bathrooms still by the office building that if there were properly signage, other students could use and, or adults could use, visitors could use, so.
And I did hear that feedback as well.
Yeah, yeah. They just knew that you guys were possibly voting on things tonight and so they wanted to, they asked if I would share, make sure that everybody was aware of what their concern with the change in the bathroom configuration was.
So where we're looking at is in the current pre-k rooms, there's two restrooms within there. Or in the current kindergarten room, there's two within there. Currently, the pre-k has one restroom that they share between two rooms within there. Because we're converting the kindergarten to a pre-k room, we also want to have kindergarten have access to restrooms. So currently kindergarten has two restrooms within that room. So that hallway access is actually for the kindergartners to have a shared, so they'll use restroom.
And I think part of it now is, you know, if you're upstairs in the pre-k room, the bathroom's about 25 feet straight out of the room. Where now they would be going out of the room, down the hallway and around the corner, and there's not that direct eyesight anymore to send a 4K student. And I'm just, if we were standing outside the pre-k room all morning long, that bathroom is being used a good chunk of the day by individual students who either need assistance with toileting or are toilet training. So they're not fully, not fully capable of doing it independently. So it's just, I think their concern with one bathroom isn't going to be enough. And then they're going to have to figure out how to get 4K students to a bathroom that they can't.
Tim, is it possible for within code to have a door to the hallway and also a door from the pre-k room?
It is, privacy becomes a little more of a concern.
Right, you got to have one locker, both lockers.
You have to make sure that, logistically, it tends not to work all well from a code standpoint, it's durable. So we have, we're planning two restrooms at a location, one for the kindergarten, one for pre-k. We can definitely make adjustments within there, we're open to feedback. I can also say pre-k rooms sharing one restroom is very common. In new construction, if we were to design this, we'd be designing one restroom in there.
And they also ask for the ability of changing. And if the two bathrooms are left as is, there would not be an opportunity to put that in, is that correct?
Correct, so part of the challenge is if we touch those restrooms, they're not handicap accessible right now, so they're smaller. So we have to enlarge those restrooms if we end up touching them, which we are. So that's where we're capturing a little more space within there. We're making them a little bit oversized, actually from what we are required to put them in for idiotic reasons. So they're just changing space within the restroom as well. the restroom as well, within both rooms. So they're good-sized restrooms.
How many square feet do you need per restroom? Let's say 120?
Yeah, you need, no, that's a big number. You need a five-foot, five-foot training radius.
Could you just, if they want that extra bathroom, could you bump the walls out on both sides and, are those new walls anyway?
Those are new walls.
Could you just bump them out and say, okay, you want another bathroom, or if we're going to have to take some square footage out of your bathroom?
We can add another restroom. I can also, you know, I'm well concerned that if we start adding a lot of restrooms, there's an associated cost with each restroom. So then it becomes more of a cost conversation, but.
Problem I have is if we already have two that kindergarten are using, and so we're going to go to one, and we're remodeling, we don't want to add more facilities, not take away facilities. So, and I know as a teacher, I know that two bathrooms for classes of 20 to 25 kindergartners, they're used. I mean, one bathroom, I don't believe is sufficient.
But the bathroom is right here, Tony.
I know where the bathroom is.
For the kindergarten.
But it's still, I think the kindergarten classroom should have two bathrooms.
They got, what's wrong with that bathroom right there or right there?
I know, but there's not two bathrooms, there's one, right?
You're saying it's all?
Boys and girls.
There's two bathrooms?
No.
You're on the wrong.
Here's the one, kindergarten, there's boys, girls, two, and then there's, this is the one they're talking about.
Right.
For the kindergarten process.
It opens up to.
Right, so there's going to be, so you're going to have, you have two rooms here, right?
Yeah.
And you're only going to have one bathroom, the pre-K, and then the kindergarten have to come over here to use this.
Angela.
I just don't think that's.
Currently, the kindergarten students don't use those.
As far as I know, and I, so Ms. McDonald's room is the kindergarten room that's not attached, her classroom goes down to the communal bathroom or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
I would have to double check with Mrs. McGuire and Ms. Beinborn, but from what I have seen, their students don't use the bathrooms between their two bedrooms, between their two bathrooms, they go to the.
To the large bathroom.
To the main one. You know, I mean, I was in Ms. Beinborn's room the other day, and the kids signed out of that bathroom, and they walk out to go to the main bathroom. They don't, I, I'm sure sometimes they might, but on a regular basis, I don't believe the kindergarten uses those two bathrooms right now. So then my question would be, do they really need access to an individual one when they're already used to going around the corner to the main bathroom? But, but I would say that I, I think we should clarify with Ms. Beinborn and Ms. McGuire, because I'm not in their room 100% of the time, but from what I have seen, they do not use them.
You need to make sure that they get.
Yep, absolutely.
So are we going to table this? Vote, or are we going to vote, is there going to be a motion?
It's up to you guys.
I, I, I think we ought to give Tim at least a couple of weeks to, I mean, the options before us, would that be the same options to bring back, or can you go back, nail it down, said, this is exactly what we need to do, if we're not going to do this, we got to go offsite, or we got to get portals?
I don't think the layout or layout will attract impact on the phasing.
Okay.
The, the conversation for phasing, I think we can still accomplish, and won't have a significant impact on the layout, if that makes sense. And even the conversation for restroom, those are fine-tuning conversations, those aren't.
Right.
This is just to.
I would favor having the crews offsite and getting worse problems taking.
This is only to basically approve this part, this is to approve the.
It's just the plan, and just.
If we plan, if we approve this, then they're going to, they're going to do the addition first.
No, the floor.
It's just really the layout.
It's just layout.
Layout only, not the phasing, not.
Specify that. We're still, we're still writing checks, so we can stop writing a check if we have to.
So this is just to approve the plan as, like the rooms and everything that we have here.
So they can start moving forward. But now we also need to do a little more legwork and find out if.
Then we're going to approve how we want them to proceed at the next, the next time they leave.
December, sooner than that?
Yeah, I think as long as I have a couple level with the draft that we're showing, between us, you know, we don't need necessarily formal approval, I just want to make sure we're heading in the right direction.
Just an idea, Tim, and I don't know if it's possible or not, but the existing gymnasium, I know we use it at lunch, lunchroom Fayed, the kids could take their lunches back to the classroom and eat Fayed, and it's, I mean, could we skip Fayed for a couple of months if we had to, to make three, four classrooms?
Kids' class.
I mean, under, under.
They give it to you.
Why think?
I don't think they give it to you. No, I'm serious. Their, their statute for PPE is very specific, three times, 30 minutes a week. But you could try it.
I mean, I, I simply don't know, but.
Well, there are alternatives, I mean, there could be an alternative for that too as far as, I mean, nice days in the fall. Yeah, they go outside, and I mean, you could have, you know, you could have the teachers teach it, you know, but then, you don't need the PTE teacher there for some time, but it has to be under the direction of him.
Correct. Somebody who's certified with a Fayed background has to be the one preparing the lessons.
But the winter time.
Just an idea.
I'm just, I'm just giving you the thing, because I doubt they'd approve a legal for that.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the plan?
So we're approving the plan without the phasing?
Correct. I, I think, I'll make a motion to approve the plan with one exception to try to resolve that kindergarten bathroom issue, but I, I think the plan should be approved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Let's call a question, Angie.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
We're going to move on to amendments as you move on. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So this is from DPI.
Yes. This, this is the, I had referenced Wolfher as accounting, practices, accounting codes. So this, these budget amendments are basically a requirement due to the change in Wolfher. If you look at, I think District Maintenance on the top is 10, eight, 861-320, and they're saying you can't have it in 320, so you have to have it in 10E 861-324. That's the DPI, the Wolfher code's telling you, this is now the code you have to use for that fund.
They need to function both.
Yes. So basically, the dollar amounts are the same, it's, it's the same dollar amount, the monies aren't moving from Peter to pay Paul or anything like that, it's staying in the same locations, it just has to be coded according to what the DPI is.
I'll move to approve these second amendments.
Any other comments? Call a question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yep.
Bastin?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move three after our closed session. Let's move into business services, credit card and approval of the bills. Somebody care to make a motion for both?
I move that we approve the credit card statement, that activity, and the approval of bills.
Thank you.
Second one.
Questions, comments?
Dr. Dunn, the points have been redeemed, it will show up in, or sorry, Dr. Lindsay, not Dr. You moved. Dr. Lindsay, the points have been redeemed, it will show up on the December bill.
Okay. Okay.
You should take that as a real count, and Doc, he's.
Well, I noticed they were even hiring one thing of like 250 something points, you were like, wow.
Let's call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bastin?
Bastin. Okay, we have launched the, we went to closed session, we're going to talk about criminal, I don't know, prevention, and there may be one personal, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm just sorry, trying to blank.
The reason I want to change my vote, Tim?
Yeah, it's because you're going to probably bring up a name, so we're going to move that into closed session.
I move, I would move into closed session.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, hold on. So we're, we're talking about sensitive.
Safety.
We're talking about safety, and then we're talking about confidential person related to the change of vote in number three?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?